So now that you're settled down, would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you tonight to ask your blessings on us as we make decisions for the county and help us to make the right decision. Please be with everyone here and keep them safe as they leave here tonight and go home. Please be with our troops wherever they may be. Be with all of our emergency firefighters and policemen in this county as they do their jobs. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, call the August meeting of the Walton County Board of Commissioners to order and let the roll call show that all are present. All right, you have your agenda before you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is unanimous. And now we'll jump right into the main event, Planning and Development. Sharona?
Okay, this first case is 4.1, Proposed Settlement of Z20110015. Rezone 85.48 acres from A1 to R1 with conditions for residential subdivision. The applicant is Lexus Homes, Inc. The owner is Snowsmill Road LLC. This property is located on Snowsmill Road and it is in District 4. And if you'll remember, we went over this briefly last month. It was not advertised and posted properly, so we held a public hearing just for the ones that were here. It has now been posted. Everything's been advertised properly, and we just need to open the public hearing again for a decision tonight.
Okay. All right, I am going to open public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward and tell us what they're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt Reeves, Anderson Tate &amp; Carl Law Firm, One Sugarloaf Center, Duluth, Georgia. I'm proud to represent Ken Gary of Lexus Homes. His daughter Tamara Briggs, who works in the business, is also here. Raise y'all's hand, Mr. Gary, Ms. Briggs. Mr. Gary had a career with Georgia Power, retired in 1997 after doing a variety of duties with them, and he started building custom homes in northeast Georgia, and he's been doing that successfully since 1997. Hedgerows and many neighborhoods like that in northeast Georgia. He is proud to show his product. At the last meeting, I showed you some examples of his good work. That July 11th letter that you've got on file shows some of those high-quality custom homes. You remember that from Hedgerows and some of those other neighborhoods. These comprise the 17 conditions that Mr. Gary has proposed that all exceed the county standards. We worked with the county in looking at the other six or eight neighborhoods in this area that expert witnesses in the court case had pointed to, and these lots are bigger and the houses are bigger and have higher standards than several other neighborhoods in this area. This area is designated suburban on the land use map, and the lot size and the home sizes exceed county standards. New since last meeting, we delineated the green space on the site plan. You have that in front of you. This was presented at the public meeting last week that Commissioner Bradford organized and Commissioner Dixon attended, so the public has been able to see this site plan. It was in black and white last time, but as you could see, this is not a high-density subdivision. It's 64 nice custom homes on 85 acres. It's got a lot of buffer, a lot of green space. If you divide 64 homes into 85 acres, that's almost 1.3 acres per home in total, and all the lots are minimum of one acre on this property, which exceeds the lot size on those six or eight neighborhoods in the area. And those 17 conditions that we went over last time also exceed that. And to refresh your recollection on those 17 conditions, we have a minimum square footage of 2,200 on one-story homes, 2,400 on two-story homes. We've got a lot of conditions about the exterior, having high-quality materials, no vinyl, no aluminum. It's going to have brick and other high-quality materials, minimum of one acre per lot for the 64 lots. And one of the neighboring property owners brought up a good point at the meeting that we had. Somebody was asking for compromise, and he said, "Show where you started and show where you ended." You know, when this application was filed a few years ago, and Paul Rosenthal handled that, my co-counsel in the case, we were requesting about 80 lots based on the R1 OSC zoning. And 40 lots, that is the current zoning that has not been successful for development on this neighborhood or any other 85-acre property in the county in recent decades. But the 64 lots is a compromise, and the 17 conditions, those are a compromise. Those exceed and increase the county standards. Somebody last week said, "Why can't you build like Savannah Square?" And we looked at that neighborhood. It was developed over 20 years ago and on a smaller piece of property. And so by going from those six or eight neighborhoods in the area to bigger lots and bigger houses and better materials and selling for $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, you're probably going to get a Savannah Square in this area on a smaller parcel in the future where people will pay $800,000, $900,000, or $1 million, particularly considering what's across the line in Oconee County nearby. You've got those 17 conditions. It's got an attractive entrance monument. The entrance to the neighborhood, the front of the neighborhood is fairly narrow, so you're not going to be able to see those 64 homes. When you drive by, you're going to see an attractive entrance and a lot of green space and landscaping. And right now, this property is under agricultural taxation like it has been for many years and, you know, contributes less than $10,000 a year to the county treasury. With these 64 custom homes, that's going to contribute a lot of money to the county and the schools every year. It's also going to increase property values in the area because this is going to be a larger lot and larger home than the other subdivisions that have been built in the area. So Mr. Gary has listened. He has increased the standards. It's going to be a high-quality neighborhood. It's going to end a lawsuit, and it is the product of compromise and concessions. But each and every one of those 17 conditions and this R1 zoning, they are necessary to deliver this high-quality product in this neighborhood that's going to benefit the county and be mutually beneficial because it's going to increase property values and it's going to set the bar higher for development in this neighborhood. We do dispute some of the arguments that we've heard at the last meeting and at the community meeting, which are generalized and not very sound in terms of issues about water and septic and all that. But Mr. Gary hired an engineer. This is a well-engineered subdivision. It complies, it exceeds county standards, and it complies with state and Health Department standards. For those reasons, I reserve time for rebuttal and respectfully request your approval of R1 conditional neighborhood with 64 nice homes on it on 85 acres. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the board at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my husband, Ed, is going to pass out, okay, great, thank you, is going to pass out pamphlets and folders that contain a picture of the map with the spot zoning on it that we've spoken about before. There's going to be a pamphlet there for the Professor Gary Hawkins from UGA, who has actually did a site visit, and Martin Wondley, the Northeast Georgia District, Water District Man, Soil and Water Testing, the Aquifer Maps state, the criteria for the groundwater recharge areas for the whole state of Florida, and the federal DEP Aquifer Recharge Area Regulations. Also, a map of the Turkey Creek Flood Plane includes the area from the Snowsmill LLC property to east of the Mount Carmel Church Road. Map of the vital water recharge area showing the entire Snowsmill Road LLC property lying within the recharge area. Okay, as a member, oh, my name, Candace Steinhue. I live on Snowsmill Road, about a half-mile away, 3059, in this. As a member of the Save Walton County, Georgia, we are committed to protecting our community. The developer owns the land, and he can develop it as currently zoned, A1, and he can build up to 42 homes as it's zoned. Our concern is not the homes. Our concern is our water and our drinking water, our well water, our streams for our cattle. That's the concern, the contamination, and if you'll consult the experts, they will tell you. And most importantly, the county commissioners denied this prior zoning request, which is a final legislative act. This new submission is not actually valid because the zoning was previously determined and denied, and the sudden resurrection of this denied zoning by the chairman and the county attorney based on a pending lawsuit by the developer would be like suing the state of Georgia because your pet law didn't get passed that you lobbied for at the Capitol. Similar here, the developer has no legal winning argument to overturn the legislature. Zoning denial by the Walton County Commissioners. The developer has no right here except to do anything under the current zoning of A1 and 2 acres. Why this sudden resurrection of this denied zoning? In June, a month ahead of the July 11th meeting, Chairman Thompson submitted his submission proposal on behalf of the developer to Sharona Parker, the Planning and Zoning Director. Then he sent emails to the district commissioners looking for affirmation of his decision. Five of the six commissioners, now this is a month ahead of time, agreed to support the chairman's decision. One commissioner said no and asked why the settlement. He said the county attorney already said they would win that case. He asked if he could share this with the public and received no response from the chairman. And I have all the emails that I had to do under open record statement, and it took a long time to receive, right here verifying everything I just said. Now, why was it kept under the radar? There was no public notice sign was on the property, and none of the adjoining landowners were notified. Even the commissioner for District 4 did not find out about the fact that the chairman had placed it on the July 11th, 2023 agenda until the afternoon before, at which time he notified his constituents. And immediately, many of us notified that they were violating, the county, that they were violating their own rules. And all of a sudden, the chairman pulled it off the agenda, and he was forced to send out notifications and place a public notice on the property. And he immediately rescheduled it for today, August 1st. What if we hadn't taken action? Would they have voted on?
Please address the board. You're not preaching to a choir group.
Excuse me.
You're talking to the board, and you're making false statements. I want you to look at this board.
I am asking questions, sir. What if no action had been taken? Would they have voted on it as a done deal? Now, let's look what was submitted by the owner and development for approval at that meeting on July 11th, 2023. In there was a piece of paper, right? And on it here, it says it could be A, A1, A2, R1, R2, and R3. And R3, by the way, is multi-family.
Please address the board.
Okay, on one acre. Can you see it?
We got to see you and understand.
Can you see the paper?
This is who you're addressing, the board.
Okay, I'm looking at you, aren't I, sir?
Now you are.
Okay, I have to look at the paper. Excuse me. It says, as I said, now which is it? Is it A1, A, A2, R1, R2, and R3? Because this sure looks like a carte blanche to do whatever you want. Now, what a surprise that there was no new zoning application filed. I mean, this is a totally different submission. There was a different acreage involved in here. There was different homes. There was a different configuration, and all they attached was that two-page description. Now, look at the subdivision sketch that they submitted. In it, we did a CAD overlay of it, and a CAD.
Please address the board.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
No, you're not.
I am reading from this.
I need to hear what you're saying, and when you turn your head.
Would you stop reading? Would you stop it? You are so rude.
I am chairman of this.
You're rude.
Thing. Well, do it as you're asked.
Okay, now, CAD overlay, this shows the actual lot size, and the lot sizes, many of them are under one acre, and one in particular is 6/10ths of acre. So that has to be looked into. Now, in that, he also, and he brought it up today, too. He had this pretty picture of this beautiful home here, right? This is what the homes are going to look like in there.
You just can't understand that you need to address this board, can you? I'm going to ask you to sit down if you don't speak to the board.
These are beautiful homes, right? Isn't that what everybody's been saying, beautiful homes? Well, these homes are homes that are somewhere else that has sewer and public sewer, and these homes run 2,800 to 8,200 acres. We looked it up. This is not what's going to go in there. So what is this? Is this bait and switch? You know, trying to get people to say, "Oh, look at these homes. They're so nice." Now, every meeting, they were marketing those new homes. And even the county attorney upon meeting with him, he kept showing me, "Look at the pretty homes." And I kept saying, "It's not about the homes. It's about the public health and safety. It's about our water." One of the many open record requests that I did on the morning of July 11th was for a copy of their new zoning change request application. I was told there was none submitted. Our ordinance is clearly state that if your application was denied, you had to resubmit a whole new application, minimally six months after the denial. The chairman and the developer did not follow the county zoning ordinance. Now, let's look at the discrepancies. If you look at what they submitted, there are no approvals of county road with gutters or sidewalks. There is no documentation on how the road was going to be built. Is the county tax dollars picking up the tab for the county road? Is the developer paying for it? Is the width of the road 80 feet, 60 feet? If it's road and ditch, the county will have to maintain the road. Isn't that more tax dollars? And how far back from the road do the properties start? You can't tell. How are you going to handle the stormwater runoff? It doesn't show how far the property setbacks are from the road. And are you aware that this property is part of the Turkey Creek Flood Plane that goes east, all the way past Mount Carmel Church Road? And if reserving terrains as that to an R, does that mean all the land that is open season to developers in this flood plain or no flood plain is this, this zoning is approved? I mean, this is a dangerous precedent. I mean, I think you, as chairman, you own property in that flood zone, don't you? 75 acres, if I remember correctly. We sent you videos and pictures of all the flooding that happens now. What happens when it all washes all from the sewage from the septics? At the July 11th meeting, Commissioner Warren asked, "What is a water recharge area?" We have given you two experts from UGA that explains the increased dangers to our public health and safety, particular on the design vital water recharge area. Has anybody met with any of these experts? Wouldn't you think it's important to make an informed decision? And has anybody researched Lexus Homes? Here are a few of the complaints ranging from 2016 to 2022. They definitely set a pattern of behavior. One out of five stars. The whole neighborhood has extensive drainage issues. Does that sound familiar? And that's the testimony of someone that lives in a Lexus home. One out of five stars. My husband and I bought a home from this builder. I suggest that you run as fast as you can to a new builder and a subdivision. The quality of the workmanship is shoddy at best from the construction, landscaping, and no follow-up by their construction company. One out of five stars. I'd rate it a zero if I could, and there's more detail to these complaints. Is this really what we want to do to our community? Are you aware that the minute you rezone a property R, the developer could sell it tomorrow under that new zoning, and someone could do another totally different plan with R? Okay, I'm going to calm down just for a second. A lot of enthusiasm here. You unanimously denied this prior zoning request, which is a final legislative act. This new submission is not actually valid because the zoning was previously determined and denied. You did the right thing then when you denied it, and we can only hope that you do the right thing now. We are asking you to place the health and welfare of our residents in this county first. High-density subdivisions with septics, they're going to destroy, you know, our whole county, all our water and everything. And Loganville already has three contaminated streams now from subdivisions with septics, high-density septics. Now, I'm going to ask yourself a question. What would Jesus do?
Okay. And does anyone have something different? We understand what she says. We have the water recharge.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Again, my name's Mark Kane. I reside over in Good Hope off of 186, about a mile out. I moved to Walton County 20-plus years ago because I wanted to have a lifestyle like this. I want all my kids to play in a creek and my kids to enjoy the lifestyle that we have today. And water has become very important to us out on the east part of Walton County. And so, you know, I just got a presentation we'll walk you through just to save time. This is on all three of these zonings that are aboard that are to the commissioners today. So I'm going to review those and save you some time at least. So the first thing that you heard the young lady before me talk about septic tanks, and this comes from the Department of Environmental Health on page 22. 1,200 gallons on a three-bedroom, two-bath house is emitted to our groundwater every single day per house. So when we do this high-density zoning, it's going to increase the water flow that goes into that and affects our water table. And I've asked a couple of the developers, except for one, if they consider a level four soil test, and was told no. So I'm just going to walk through, and let's look at the zoning that we're talking about. This is the one on Pleasant Valley that backs up to Navajo Trail. Those are the two zonings. One of them's 69.87 acres with 64 lots. The other one is on Pleasant Valley with 85.3 acres and 70 lots. And so can you imagine how much water's going through that? So here's a snapshot from the flood plane. This lot here on Pleasant Valley, you can see backs up, again, this is a flood plane with our creeks, and this adjoins to Jack's Creek. On the backside of that, on the very top, you'll notice that's where the Navajo Trail, they're asking for half-acre lots. So then this is the one on Pleasant Valley, again, with a snapshot of the flood plane that's involved with Jack's Creek. So let's look at, on this slide, it talks about, this is Department of Environmental Health, and this talks on Section C, page 40. Regardless of the initial permeability, that means the water being able to go into our soil, many absorption fields fail after a number of years of due to soil clogging. So when we're putting all this contamination into our ground, it's absorbent. Now, I understand that they do a level three test, and that's three holes per acre. And again, that's the basic test for the health to protect our water. But large volumes of septic tank fluid accommodating the absorption field. Please note today, if a septic tank fails today, what is the process to have the new field put in? They call a septic guy. He comes and digs the ground and puts a new field in. There's no soil analysis. The Health Department's not notified. So again, the ground's already contaminated. The field failed once. Is it going to fail again? Possibility that it's going to fail again. So here we go to the comprehensive plan that you guys drew up in 2022 that's published on the website, and it says, three streams, let's see, it does the counting up. Yeah, three streams are notified in the comprehensive plan. Big Flat Creek, Little Haynes Creek. I call the water guy, Mr. Pennell, and basically, all that's being done is testing the creeks. And I got a major concern with that because the Clean Water Act portion of Big Flat Creek and Little Haynes Creek for elevated fecal coliform, and I'll show you the slide here. Let's go to the next one. This is a 303 and a 305 list that's done by the Clean Water Act. Notice how many creeks from Walton County are on this. Big Flat Creek, Little Haynes Creek, Jack's Creek is on here, and when I talked to the department, the assessment says pending is because the pH level's too high, and the state's reevaluating that and will test the water again. But here's an interesting photo as well from the same thing. It talks about surface quality water. The state shows 16 streams on the current 303 and 305 list. The Clean Water Act was created to protect our drinking water, both creek streams and lakes. Please notice the column cause. What is the current plan to fix the issue? I'll ask the commissioners today. What is the plan to fix the failed creeks that are on this list besides testing the So let's look at Big Flat Creek. Here's an override view. This is off of 138. That's Nunley Farm Road. This lake here today is contaminated. Have the neighbors been notified? Health Department won't do anything until it gets to above a certain level. But what are we doing, guys, when we're continuously putting this high-density zoning in and our creeks are getting infiltrated? Here's a snapshot from the regional water planning. Says wastewater, the upper COE plan calls the implementation of centralized sewer in developing areas where density warrants and development of local wastewater master plans to evaluate water treatment and disposal options to meet future demands. Comprehensive land use planning and local government participation in construction erosion and sediment control are also encouraged. Guys, our water's getting contaminated, and Jack's Creek is the next on the list, guys. So the survey, this again is your comprehensive plan. So here's some information if you haven't read it lately. Survey results indicate a significant need to reduce suburban expansion through the county future plan, Land Use Map and rezoning decisions. Several residents in this, on this plan expressed desire to concentrate high-density cluster neighborhoods within various city limits located throughout the county instead of unincorporated areas. There seems to be a strong desire among residents in eastern Walton County to maintain a rural character in this area. So I ask you again, what are we doing? So I ask you again, what are we doing to change our zoning? This is their current zoning map. The green here is a conservation. The whole part of eastern Walton County ought to be in conservation. Then we don't have to worry about the zoning, guys. Here's a nearby county, Oconee County. If you look at their zoning map, look at all the green that's conservation. There's no hiccups in that. And trying to get a development in that section is like pulling teeth. They don't allow it. And then the next section is a little bit more development with two to five-acre lots. Their development all runs consistent throughout the county. You guys continue to approve this high-density zoning, we're in trouble. We're gonna have a lot of problems with our water. And so here's the solution. Protect our water source. You guys only have one shot at this. 80% of the residents are on well water in eastern Walton. Require a level four soil analysis. The developers don't want to do it because there's an extra cost. Extend the zoning process to 180 days. Impose stricter setbacks and lot size. I know, Mr. Thompson, I talked about this last time, about becoming a water-first county. There's federal money for that. The city of Monroe got $150,000 out of that deal. So in closing, the people in eastern Walton County have spoken both in the comprehensive plan and two meetings we had in the community. Developers only interested in doing the bare minimum. None of them want to do a level four test. That tells us what's more about the ground. Instead of three holes, it could be four to six holes, and the county has a better opportunity to understand what the soil is and whether septic tanks are gonna fail. And as you've seen in the previous slides, some things need to change when it comes to protecting our stream, lake, and drinking water. I talked to Dr. Elizabeth Boone. She heads up the watershed protection branch for the state. And she made several comments noting that continuing high-density zoning will only bring more contaminated water to our streams. Just a short time ago, the following commissioners, Mr. Warren, Mr. Shelnut, Mr. Banks, and you, Mr. Thompson, approved a transfer station down on 78. And I ask you, I just don't understand why we did that. The eastern part of Walton County has, now we have a transfer station, now we have three landfills, we got an inert station, and we have a rock quarry. Are you guys, just be honest with us. Just tell us upfront if that's what you're wanting to do is develop eastern Walton County so the people here can make a choice whether we want to live in the county. So tonight, you'll speak loud and clear whether you pass the zoning for this, so we will know which direction the county wants to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have something different to say? I want to hear it, please. Please come to the podium. I won't give everybody, I won't cover everything.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Peterson. I'm over in Good Hope on Jim Edmondson Road. So I'm within a mile or so of this development. This is not about pretty houses being above the minimum for the county, as it's already been said. This is about water quality and quality of life, why we came out here. We didn't come out here for subdivisions. Even the two-acre minimum is a bare minimum, but at least we have that or thought we had that. But more importantly, it's come to our attention and it was mentioned earlier. Mr. Thompson, you own 75 acres in the vicinity of this request. You stand financial gain if this gets approved. I'm asking officially-
I own more than that 75 acres.
Well, that's good. I'm asking officially and respectfully, you're recused for making any input-
That will not happen.
-and any voting on this, I'm just putting it on record, because you stand financial gain from this outcome.
That's your assumption.
That's a pretty good assumption.
Okay, I'm going to give the applicant a chance to rebut what has been said. We've gone well past the time for comments, and the applicant has a chance to rebut what has been said.
Mr. Chair, there are a lot of people who care about this, but the ones who've been taking the microphone at the meetings, they've often been wrong, but they've never been in doubt. There's been a lot of inaccurate, unsound arguments they've made that we dispute. They've attacked Mr. Gary wrongfully. He made it through the Great Recession as a builder and developer. A lot of folks went broke. He's built a lot of homes, and he's proud of his record. We've shown him to folks, and he's an open book on that. And he and his daughter and his company, they are committed to building a high-quality subdivision. He got to meet a lot of builders, suppliers, and other folks who do business that serve neighborhoods. And he's committed to hiring locals on this neighborhood for nice homes that will produce jobs in this area in addition to higher property values and property taxes. These arguments that a few people have made about what they think the county needs, this neighborhood will give hundreds of thousands more dollars every year to the county's budget to do good things and real needs that the county has, which may or may not be the kind of things that Ms. Donahue and her brother are saying are problems. But the county will have a lot more money to take care of real problems with this 64-lot neighborhood. This is not a spot zoning. We've been in court for two years. There are six or eight neighborhoods in this area with smaller lots and smaller houses in this neighborhood. This increases the standards for this area and will produce the kind of neighborhood that some people like, Savannah Lane, which has on a smaller piece of property. Ms. Parker addressed septic at the last meeting, so I won't belabor that. But Mr. Gary had an engineer, Matt Sullins Engineering, a local engineer, who has been on site. Nobody from UGA or the federal government or anybody else has been on site, but Mr. Gary's engineer has. The county has looked at the issue and determined that this plan complies with septic issues. There's been site work since the last meeting in response to some of these arguments, and not a single lot is affected by some of these arguments despite additional fieldwork. You can't build this neighborhood as it's presently zoned. The real argument that Ms. Donahue is making is, you know, keep it zoned the way it is because they know it'll be what it is today, which is, you know, agricultural woods with about 8,000 a year in property taxes. No, and see, some people want that. That's what they really want, and that's the truth. But we had court for two years, and not a single witness in the case knowledgeable about real estate has pointed to an 85-acre neighborhood that's been developed under this zoning in the whole county in decades. So rezoning is necessary, but it's not just a rezoning. It's a rezoning with 17 conditions with higher standards. Procedurally, and let me just explain this, the county attorney is right. The county can hear, can rehear a zoning that is the subject of a court case on remand, and that's what you've done. And Ms. Donahue and her brother and their friends, they've peddled unsound arguments that are legally wrong in that regard. It happens all the time in Georgia law. When a lawsuit is filed about a zoning, the county has the power to rehear and reconsider a remanded zoning. And it wasn't six months ago, it was two years ago or more. And you remember Paul Rosenthal presenting that previously, both in the court case and in this room. So this is a remand pursuant to a superior court case. The precedent, there is precedent, and I heard somebody say, "We don't care about those other neighborhoods you're talking about." Well, they're there. And that's the kind of thing that is a precedent, and this precedent that this zoning will make will increase the standards and will lead to better neighborhoods at higher values with bigger lots and bigger homes in this area. Ms. Donahue and her friends, they're no friends of the Walton County Board of Commissioners, and you could tell from the substance and the demeanor of her and her friends tonight that they're not afraid to tell half the truth on various points and subjects. The fact that they repeated it, that this is a high-density neighborhood under the comprehensive plan, character area map, any zoning standards, 64 lots on 85 acres is not high-density. The homes here that are bigger than the minimum, that is not high-density. This is a level property. It's a level property. It's been studied by an engineer. These scare tactics about septic tanks, I mean, these are gonna be nice houses that everybody who's looked at it has said half a million, 600,000, maybe more. They can take care of their septic tank if there's a problem. They're gonna have half a million reasons to do so. This neighborhood will make this area better, it will make property values go up. Oconee County, they showed an Oconee County map, and they showed that it was green, but if you look closely at that map they showed, there are a bunch of neighborhoods already in the green. So after the neighborhoods got built, then the county changed the color on the land use map after the neighborhoods were already built. That's a mile or so from this neighborhood, and, you know, that shows that in addition to in Walton County and Oconee County, there are neighborhoods here. And Mr. Kane cited the comprehensive plan and the character area map for his purposes, but the character area map says this is a suburban area. And that's because there have been subdivisions built here already. This rezoning will increase the lot size, increase the standards, and it will put hundreds of thousands of dollars into the county treasury each and every year, and it will give jobs to locals who Mr. Gary will hire on this nice neighborhood. Thank you for your time and patience on this zoning, and we trust you will sort through the unsound arguments that have been peddled to you and approve this rezoning on remand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is any questions of the applicant? Okay, I am going to close the public hearing and make a comment first. I have been called a lot of things, but the hateful talk tonight was not appreciated. This petition that doesn't have one signature on it, I went through it, took me four days, pulled all your parcels. You got over 80 parcels under the size that they're proposing, that you're claiming objecting to this. And that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this as presented.
Mr. Chair, for this district four, if it's okay with you, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I have made a motion and looking for a second. It's my district also. We'll have a second. All right, any other discussion? I'm gonna call the question.
I'd like to note that I do not feel-
You are out of order. You can vote no.
You asked for a discussion, and I'm gonna give it to you.
All right, let's have it.
I do feel like that R1 is uncharacteristic of the area on Snow's Mill.
That's your opinion. There's already, like he said, subdivisions out there. There's one less than three-quarters of a mile that's one-acre lots, like being proposed here. All right, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? No. All right, let's have a hand show.
Opposed.
Got two opposed, three opposed, those in favor? Passes four to three. We'll take a recess. Bailiffs, we're gonna take a recess. I'm not gonna put up with your threats and comments. She's taken an email and burst it into lies. Please exit. We have taken care of this business. This is passed. We're gonna take a five-minute break. We're gonna take a five-minute break. Commissioner Mann Kirk. Okay, we're waiting on Commissioner Adams.
I didn't know she was a teacher at Carver. It's her first year at Carver. She's been in Gwinnett County.
She's in the classroom today. I didn't realize that.
I thought it was a-
She's a good teacher.
Oh, she seems like she is.
She was, she got first runner-up for Teacher of the Year last year at her school in Gwinnett.
Okay, she a Ellie Kate, says. I tell you, you know what? If you don't act right, even if she don't tell me, she'll tell her mom or her mom.
17833.
Okay.
This thing is just so touchy and it's, yeah.
Sir.
Ain't very fun. Hate home.
Never is. Being hateful, I ain't tolerating. Okay, everyone, if we could get order, and Sharona, will you bring up the next zoning?
Yes, sir. The next case, 5.1, is approval of Z23050019. This is 19.28 acres, rezoned from A2 to B3 for a business park. The applicant and owner is John Martin- The applicant and owner is John Mark Mizzawi. Property is located at the corner of Jack's Creek and Highway 78. This is in District Four. The applicant represented this. They want to do it like a small business park, and there were a couple of people that were spoke, that spoke in opposition. Their main concerns were drainage and runoff, and then the entrance being on Jack's Creek Road.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this one, as the applicant here would like to come forward and tell us what they're proposing.
Good evening. I'm John Mark Mizzawi. I've owned the property since 2001. I want to be a good neighbor to the people around there. I see Jack's Creek as a crossroads to the, you know, off of 78 to the southern part of the county and that area. I would like to develop it, have an office park. The sketch that we provided is just kind of a preliminary sketch. A lot of the sizes of the lot will be dictated on the final use and the septic, because there's no sewer there. There are adjacent properties that have been rezoned to B3. There's the metal place. Sims Pavings got a location real close by. I think it fits into the area. It's a highway corridor, and some of the things I would hope that would be interested in coming there are some of the trade businesses, plumbers, electricians, cabinet makers, maybe a garden center, a feed and seed, maybe lawn supply type place. And then maybe later, if it grows a little bit, you might get an urgent care or maybe some law CPA type offices. That's what I hope would come there. And I said last time that I'd like it to kind of look like Garmin Professional Park. I want it to look nice. I want to, I want to buffer the adjacent property, and we do have the, you know, the floodplain, it's not showed on, shown on that map, but we do have floodplain there that's going to make us have to keep a larger buffer to the neighbors to the west and also to the south. And I would say we definitely want to protect the water. I know that's a thing that everybody's concerned about, but we'll have to contain the water runoff, which we already do have to do based on how the DOT has put the water onto the property, onto the west side of the property. And I got Kathleen Woodruff here who can answer any questions. She's the engineer that can help answer any questions.
Okay. Would you like to make any statement, or are you just here to answer questions?
I don't have any statement. I think he's an engaged owner, unlike some of the cases I work with, but I'm happy to answer any questions about designing for water quality treatment, drainage features, those types of things. As the engineer of record, I'm happy to help anybody with a question if I can.
Will this be cut into lots with a drive servicing them?
Yes, sir. We would, we expect a center drive off of Jack's Creek, kind of with a cul-de-sac with lots spiraling around that, so that each lot would, we're hoping to be at least around an acre to an acre and a half, but we do have floodplain on this property, and we will not be encroaching or, you know, grading or anything in that. So we have a pretty good bit of buffer to the west that we will not be encroaching at all.
Okay, is any questions from the board? Okay, thank y'all. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this rezon request? Okay, CNN, is there anyone here like to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward. We have two. Work your way to the forward two. I saw this gentleman first. You were closer. My eyesight's better closer.
Thank you, sir. My name's Terry Nash. I live adjacent to the property, Jack's Creek Road, and they had been speaking about the water plane, how much water comes through this place off 78. Now, I don't think that they really realize how much water actually comes off 78 to come through this property, and I'm really surprised that a lot of my neighbors are not here, because they get inundated with all the water that comes through this property, especially in front of me and behind me. And, you know, I know rezoning, they may come and say that they're going to build an office park, or they could change it after a rezoning and make, say, storage units here to where every, you have a lot of water runoff. I think, what, one acre of land, one inch of rain, it's like 230,000 gallons of water. When you times that by 10 acres, that's a lot of water that you've got to maneuver around this property. Well, when they get to their property, well, they're done with it. Now, over the years, I have seen a lot of rain come through this property, and I kind of protected myself and able to video this rain. Up to almost five inches of rain fell in 2018, which was a horrendous amount of rain that came, water that came through this property. Now, by them developing this property and having, let's say, asphalt roof runoff, that's going to add additional runoff to here that the people down from me and probably myself is going to be inundated. And I'm glad that I have actually filmed and videoed a lot of these problems, because I was protecting myself, but if the commissioners here or the board here decides to approve this, I don't think this is going to be an over issue, because it's the water. Now, I'm no engineer, he has an engineer, but I have seen the water, and everybody here knows the force of water. Now, I have to protect the lake that me and my family enjoy fishing. I've watched the pH and kind of grown fish in this lake, and everybody's enjoyed it. Now, I'm worried about my lake, and I've also actually had company from Canton, Georgia come out and kind of keep my lake in tune with stuff. Now, I feel like all these things are in jeopardy. And, you know, we can say that, that, you know, we're building a nice little park. Well, you know, I'm in business for myself. Well, you know, they won't talk about hiring 50 employees. It's hard to find one employee these days. I mean, every industry I talk to, and I do work for Walton County School Bus, and every, every industry I speak with, it's hard to find employees. Okay? Now, unless they can come up with some employees, I don't know, because they's lots, and I actually opened office buildings all down the corridor around between Georgia, and so why do we want to make new ones there? And also, why are we trying to industrialize Jack's Creek Road and make everything actually on 78? Now, you've turned down Jack's Creek. Now, it's become industrialized of its past. Everything should stay on 78. I understand that y'all industrializing parts of 78 and the east side of it, but we're not industrializing Jack's Creek Road. I mean, if they are, hey, let's put a sewer down that line and let me be a part of it. I pay taxes there, too. And I feel like, you know, if this is passed, it's kind of like you're paying favoritism, because they're able to pull the water off across 78 and not be on Jack's Creek Road, so they don't have water on Jack's Creek Road. It's all across the four lanes of traffic of 78 to pull the water there. So, I mean, they, everything seems to be wrong about this without really the taxpayers of that area. And I mean, again, I'm really surprised that the people around me, the neighbors around me, are not here today, because they get inundated by water, and it was at the point that I videoed to protect myself. And that's, you know, there's just so much water come through there. And I was talking to my neighbor here, and he was telling me that, you know, he had spoken with the Department of Transportation, Georgia, about right there at that particular area, that they dropped the sewer, I mean, the covert lines too low on 78 that causes a big wash through there. So at least what we need is longer time to do more studies on this particular piece of property, because all the water that washes through there. Now, I mean, I spoke of what, one acre, one inch of rain on acres, 230,000 gallon? Imagine developing without any soil absorbent on 10 acres, and it has five acres of, I mean, five inches of water coming through it. Hey, I don't know if any place around there can stand that, but I appreciate you listening to me. Thanks for the consideration of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Gene Morgan, and I live next door to Terry, and our main concern is the water. And like he said, I'm surprised there are more of our neighbors ain't here, because where my lot is and my yard is, and I can look through the woods during the fall to Terry's lake, you know, and his lake is up here. My land is much more lower right there. It will not perk right now. I had to have my tank pumped out every four or five months, my septic tank. I've had to go in there and add dirt and gravel, just so the sewage won't come to the top of the ground. I'm not understanding, my house is 25 years old. I bought it from J.R. Brogdon back then, but that land out there, it just, it just don't work for water. And I got some videos, too, where water just washes off 78. It comes across my next door neighbor, and then in my yard down there, and Keith that lives next to me, we've, we've actually built cross-tie walls to turn that water back into the woods. He's got two acres of land back there that he can't even use, because it's wet. It's in the floodplain. Part of my little property is in the floodplain. You know, this, this water right here is just something else, and like Terry and I both agree, they put 10 acres of asphalt up there, and I got a little drawing right here that's been proceeded. They show a little retention pond, but when they build that pond, they dig that dirt, there ain't going to be no room for the water, because it's going to fill up with water. You know, it don't go anywhere out there. His lake, it just stays full all the time. I've never seen it empty.
Okay. We understand there's a big concern for the runoff water.
Yes.
From this site.
Yes. And I don't know what I'm going to do with it. I've done the best I could with what I got now. Terry's shop, it rains real hard, his shop floods.
Okay.
It runs right through it. But you know, there's just so much water coming off 78 down that hill, and I don't know how many of you guys has been out there and just looked at the fall of the land from 78, but it needs to be some more study, some more studying done. You know, let's, just don't let this get built and then forget about me, forget about Keith, you know, because, you know, we, we sitting here trying to understand why this wants to happen there. It's because our land, our land is, it's just wet.
Any questions from the board? All right, thank you. Who's next? We have two. Okay, I'll give the applicant a chance to address the concerns.
I'd just like to say today, I'll commit that if we need to build a bigger detention pond, I will control the water. In fact, I may even be able to help the situation, because, like I said, the county has, or the DOT dumped that water from the median and the south side onto all our property. So it's damaged, I mean, it's, you know, caused problems for all of us, so I'll make a commitment that the engineer will design something that will help control that water and keep it on that property and not let it go out any faster than it has to onto their land.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Also, on this deal that I have here, this green here is a small lettuce, and I read on the web that that pond deal there, where he's talking about retention pond, it's not suitable.
Well, retention pond just holds water and releases it, keeps it from a flash flood deluge, taking out your retaining wall and everything else. It's supposed to hold water that's produced on that site and release it at a, at a rate that downstream can handle. It doesn't distribute water like a septic tank in ground. These new retention ponds are fairly large, and even if you have that once in a hundred year, five-inch rain in three or four hours, they're not going to hold it either. But the, the design in it and the requirement is that it holds all the water that comes off that site and releases it at a normal rate of return, if I understand it right.
Yes, sir. So per the land disturbance permit process, we would be required to submit a drainage study for the site, and the post-development flows would have to be reduced from the pre-development flows studied. And in this case, we would also take into account the water coming from Highway 78. As you can imagine, Georgia Department of Transportation is not going to do anything on private property to improve that.
Okay.
And Terry said there's already no water out there, so they can't get water, they can have big old wave.
Oh, there's, there's water on 78, they probably have to punch under it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. We would obtain the appropriate permits from GDOT to Jack and Boar to get out the water to the site.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you are willing to work to help the neighbors and figure out this water?
Absolutely. I think it will be much improved in a post-developed condition, because we will actually be retaining some of the lower storm events that these guys are feeling and they're actually seeing. Now, a five and six, six-inch event, you know, you're talking about a 500-year storm event in that case, but we design up through the 100-year storm event per code, so I think we'll actually improve the flow coming through the floodplain, because we will be reducing it and we'll be taking it directly to the floodplain instead of it sheet flowing across all of the property and coming down to everybody along the, along Jack's Creek Drive. So we'll actually be able to help that situation a lot.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for you.
We have a question from the board.
Actually, most of the water, what we'll do is we'll come perpendicular into the floodplain so that we don't, there's produce incision or erosion of new channels, so we won't actually outfall directly into his lake at all. We'll come perpendicular to the floodplain, where the blue line is delineated by FEMA per code, and we'll outfall at a lower rate than it's coming now.
All right. Great. How much green space do y'all plan on leaving on this? I understand stormwater fairly well.
Okay.
When it comes to that, so in, in the county, a lot of the stuff, you know, the complaints we get is we got stormwater, 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 and the more trees you take off.
Yep.
You know, the more impervious surface you put down, the more stormwater increases, right?
Exactly.
So how much vegetation do y'all plan on leaving on site? Like, would it be trees? Would it be any of the stuff?
So the vegetation that you see on the southwestern side, where you can see the, see the neighbor's lake to the north of that, that vegetation is actually delineated in floodplain and would remain intact and untouched. We would grade the site to create for pavement and infrastructure that would be needed. All of the impervious surface that's created has to be detained at a 1.2-inch volume over that entire area and reduced up through the 100, for the one-year through 100-year storm event.
Sure.
So the vegetation that you're seeing to the southeast or southwest will remain. We'll also keep a buffer along the southern-eastern side for landscaping purposes, because we can work during the permit, of course, but there's no need to take out trees just to replant trees, so we wouldn't want to pay for that.
I completely understand that.
So there's no need to take out trees that have rooted systems that are established, so we would plan on leaving a buffer on the eastern side for landscaping purposes.
Okay.
And that helps the project economically as well, so, comes from two points.
Okay. And Shawna, what is the current required buffer on adjoining property owners that would not be, so for the A1s and A2s? 50 feet?
Okay, is there any other questions from the board? Okay, go ahead.
Is any other commercial, there's no other commercial that comes off Jack's Creek Road?
No.
I can turn on the zoning map, too.
Let you see what the...
Will you, I'm asking?
Yeah, so this right here is B2 and B3, but these are agriculture.
Does any one of them come off 78?
I'll, I'll address that. So when you work with the Department of So when you work with the Department of Transportation, they have specific setbacks in sight, sightlines for intersections and deceleration lanes. And in this case, with the intersection at Jack's Creek and the deceleration lane that would be put in, we don't have the length required to have an entrance that GDOT would approve off of 78. And if we were to try and come in lower towards the floodplain, we don't have the depth of property to put in the radii and the depth of the entrance from GDOT. So in this case, with the turn lane already existing at Jack's Creek and the median there, the, the Georgia Department of Transportation limits access points off of their road.
Do you have a letter stating that from GDOT?
GDOT won't put that, won't state an opinion unless you make a formal submission. They do not provide anything of opinion or anything like that for reference until you make a formal submission.
It seems like you do have, I rode out there and looked at it, I actually cut down Jack's Creek a lot. And there's no other, you know, businesses of this off of Jack's Creek. I could see a secondary entrance off of Jack's Creek, but it seems like you'd want your main entrance coming in off of, because there's not a, you can't really turn down through there, you'd have to be coming from Monroe and turn right into the business.
Well, there's actually a drainage feature that also is problematic with the topography. It's too steep to make the vertical curve as you come in. So there's, there's several different obstacles to overcome. GDOT has an outfall point from a culvert coming down 78 that outfalls right on to Dr. Mazzalvi's property at this location. So we, we are going to have to pipe that and get that to the creek because it's, it's causing him problem as well. So we're going to have to work off of that right away in order to do that. Those structures require drainage easements and access easements on them so that we can get to them to maintain them. And by the time those are in place, we won't have enough room, we won't have enough length away from the intersection to put an, an entrance in.
Were they required to put a turn lane on Jack's Creek?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we...
What was your question, Mr. Chairman? I can't hear.
Would they be required to put a turn lane on Jack's Creek?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to close this public hearing and ask the boards to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions of the site planned and the detention pond and the buffer sufficient to contain all the stormwater runoff, which is required anyway. I'd like to add in that motion that the entrance do be put off 78 unless you can get a letter from GDOT stating that they will not allow it. And then at that point, to work with planning and zoning to install the proper entrance and exit off of Jack's Creek. And then to protect going forward from certain things, I'd like to ask for no exterior storage or commercial parking.
That's, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, subject to a DOT letter stating that they won't give the access off of 78 and no commercial storage, right?
Yes, sir. No exterior or commercial storage.
But just for clarification, if DOT does deny that, it doesn't have to come back?
Correct. Correct. If they have a letter stating, and, you know, bring that to planning and zoning.
It doesn't have to come back before I say?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And you got a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, 5.2, approval of Z23060001, 69.87 acres from R1 to R1 OSC for residential subdivision with 64 lots. Applicant is Carter Engineering Consultants, Inc. Owner is Natalie Caswell Smith. The property is located at 942 and 946 Navajo Trail. This is in District 6. The representative from Carter Engineering was at the planning commission, and again, they want to rezone this property to R1 OSC. There were a couple of neighbors that spoke, and their main concern was the water and the issue of septic and runoff.
Okay.
The planning commission recommended approval.
All right. I'm going to open a public hearing on this request. And is the applicant here or one of their representatives would like to please come up
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission. My name is Brian Kimsey. I'm with Carter Engineering out of Watkinsville, Georgia. We are the agent for Ms. Natalie Smith, who's the current property owner for this property. And the developer, Cap X, and Ms. Smith have a contract to purchase once rezoned is approved. The properties currently zoned are one, the developer wishes to rezone to include open space, community, OSC overlay. The site is located off Navajo Trail. Property is comprised of approximately 70 acres, 69.87, I think to be exact. There's currently two single-family residences, and they've been vacant for some time. There are 29.4-acre single-family residences to the west of the property, zoned R1. There are three 5- to 6-acre single-family residences to the north, zoned R1 and A1, also an undeveloped property. There is a property to the east, zoned A1, and then to the south, zoned A1. The, the main purpose, so under the R1 current zoning, we're allowed by code, one lot per acre. And so in the discussions with planning, the developer talked to them initially, and there's, there's a desire to have this more of a, have, have some more open space. If we took the 70 acres, we put 70 lots on it, although it's not fully all, you couldn't fully develop the entire lot, the entire property, then there's potential there for not very much open space, common space. And so the intent would be to reduce the lot size per the code of R1 OSC to some, the way we got it shown is .6 to .9, almost an acre lots. And that gives about 27 to 28% open space on the rest of the property. And so we feel like it's a, it's a, there's no increase. We were showing 64 current lots on this particular plan that I think you have in front of you. So we're actually decreasing from what we could put on there if, if we could develop the entire property. So we're not increasing any more traffic for what is currently zoned. We're, we're, there's some, there's some tweaks that we've made per discussion with planning about, there's currently a cul-de-sac there on Navajo Trail. I don't know if you can see it, before it enters into the other development. Can I use a mouse?
Yeah, we can. A little bit up there if you want.
Go ahead. That's great. Thank you. That helps. So you see the cul-de-sac at the top of the screen there, right above the R1. That would become a T-intersection instead of a cul-de-sac, per discussion with planning. And that would, little more, little safe, little better safety conditions coming from the new development onto that road. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Jack's Creek was about Toby D. Feller.
I didn't see that. What was it? Let's see here. Note, we're not requesting any variances for road dimensions. It'll meet the county code. Stormwater management will meet the county code. It is not, septic, uh, public sewer is not available on this property. So that will be, the lots will be, will meet the minimum requirements for environmental health to have septic system on each lot. And...
And they require an alternative area in their guidelines.
That's correct.
If one, if one system fails, there's enough suitable soil to put in a totally different system, correct?
That's correct. So there'll be a primary and a secondary system on, the, the lot has already had a Level 3 soil study completed. There are some areas where we'll design around that are unsuitable now, that we've, what we've seen from the Level, the Level 3. And the current layouts you have does take that into account. The intent is, I don't know if you have the rendering in front of you, but the intent is to have the setbacks and the buffers meet the county requirements as well. Again, these lots are .6 to .9, almost, almost an acre size. The intent of the, of the developers to have an amenity area and then some walking trails throughout the, the green space or open space. So that's really the intent of the, of the developer. The code, front setback is, building setback is 40 feet, side setback is 15, and rear is 40 feet. So we'll meet those requirements and, and the buffers that are required for adjacent properties that are incompatible uses. Water supply will be provided by Walton County. I think that's all I have to present.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
I, I have a question.
All right.
So the cul-de-sac, what does your entrance look like compared to, I mean, that's a weird intersection, you know, with a cul-de-sac there. What's your, what does your entrance look like?
The cul-de-sac will be completely removed.
On both sides or just on one side?
Well, so we can do it either way. So there is a, there is an alternative. You see a lot of times on, it's almost like a bypass lane, but our intent is probably going to be to do away with the entire cul-de-sac. It'll just be a cleaner look to it of a T-intersection there. The other alternative is a roundabout, but no one wants to really go, I mean...
Right.
But it would be a true T-intersection.
But how's it gonna look? It's gonna be like rock entrance? What kind, how's the entrance gonna look to this?
The entrance will look just like an asphalt to asphalt T-intersection. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. There'll be no...
Well, actually both. The intersection itself and the actual, like, the look of the intersection itself, how's it gonna?
Oh, how you're coming into the end of development?
Right, right.
Yeah, it'll be, there's a, there's a good bit of green space required on that front edge. So you won't see, I think it's, I think it's about 75 feet back before you see a lot. So there'll be landscape area, a sign that would be permitted through the county to say what the development is. Sidewalks, lights, meet the county code. There is a, if you notice the subdivision beside it, well, you can't see it now. It has two cul-de-sacs at the end of, at the end of that. Let me see if I can zoom out.
And what's the width of that road per code?
24 feet.
24 feet.
The current, if you see the current subdivision has two cul-de-sacs at the very end, whereas that, if you have a, you know, a fire that you can't get a loop access, so our, we're recommended having a loop access through ours, through our development. So you can get access from both sides.
An emergency, it can come either way.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
What are the, Shawna, this is probably a better question for you. How many current homes are in this development? Because it's a one-way in, one-way out. There's no A-cell or D-cell or anything out there on Highway 83. And it, how many homes are currently there? And by adding these additional homes, what kind of safety concern is that sort of gonna throw out there or add?
Well, I understand what you're, what you're asking, but what we have to do is, this is, this is a development off of a county road beginning Navajo Trail. So, you know, if there's more, if there's 100 or more, 101 or more, there has to be two entrances. But because this is off of the existing county road, and there's no more than 100 in this development, only one entrance is required. I mean, I understand what you're getting at, is that all of these are coming off of...
83.
You know, 83. But still, this is coming off of a county road. So...
But it's still, there, there ain't no, there's no other way to get out other than 83, and there's no other way to get in other than 83.
That's correct.
So this is its own entity inside of an entity?
Off of a county road.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Okay, is anyone else here wants to speak in favor of this development? All right, saying none. Is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this development? Please come forward. And get in line. She jumped up before you. I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
State, state your name and address, please.
My name is Becky Brewer, and I own the property at 916 Navajo Trail, which is approximately 500 or more feet north of where this is gonna be. Anyway, I spoke the other night at the very first meeting. So I feel like there's really no need for me to say anything tonight, except for the fact that I'm heartbroken over this. I've been at my property for 32 years, and I do know all the people that own that property. Just, more of the heartbreak is that these lot sizes are going to be so small. I just feel like we should stick with the two acres as a lot size, like it has been in the county. But I, I know that it's, it's not gonna do any good for me to say anymore. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Shawna, what's the lot size of those Navajo lots?
Less than a half acre.
They're less than a half acre? Okay. All right, thank you.
My name's Roger Greer. I'm from Good Hope, live out in Good Hope. And what you just said, and just in comparison to something you said about an hour and a half ago, one acre, one house with septic. And you, you moved to approve and approved, and the board approved, a development width less than an acre. This one has less than an acre, and Navajo Trail has less than an acre. And then there's another one coming up with many, also less than an acre on septics. Coming from a, I came from down, up north, septic systems fail. I've seen towns where they've been forced to run sewers because of these septic system failures, and that's what we're headed for here in Walton County. You don't want sewer. You don't want it. That's what's coming, but good luck. And I'm just gonna remind you, one acre, one house. You said that three times about an hour.
It, it is the overall density of the track. In this particular track, what, how many lots is it? And it's, so it's one house per acre density. It doesn't mean a physical acre on one house. It depends on the soil. Yes. Thank you. Who else would like to speak against this one? Yes. Please, please come to the podium.
Highway 83 is a state highway.
Navajo is a county highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Navajo's a county road now.
That's all I'll say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I give the applicant a chance to come back and address the concerns if you want to or answer any more questions. That's the process. So you gotta come back one more time.
I'd be glad to answer more questions. I do want to clarify one more time. It's currently R1. We have one lot per acre. We could put almost 70 lots on there. We're going from R1 to R1 OSC. We're dropping down to a lower density of 64 lots for the whole 69.8 acres.
Okay. Any question, other questions?
I got a question.
All right.
So what price range and what size house are you gonna build?
Minimums house size will be 1,800 square feet, up to approximately 2,100 square feet. The price range, the developers are here if they, if they want to speak, but about $350,000 is what they're telling us is be the minimum house range. Is that correct?
HOA?
It would have to have an HOA. There'd be common spaces, they'll have to have an HOA.
I like that. All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing and ask the board to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to approve this rezon, as stated?
All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Uh, let the record show Commissioner Bradford voted no. Did I miss another no?
No, you didn't.
Okay. So it's, uh, six to one. All right.
All right, 5.3 approval of rezoned Z23060002, 85.30 acres from A1 to R1 OSC for a residential subdivision with 72 lots. The applicant is Freeman Barong Properties LLC. The owner is JM, JMS Properties LLC. This is on Pleasant Valley Road and it is in District Six. Um, the representative from Freeman Barong was at the planning commission represented this. They wanna do 72 lots. They are proposing to increase their house size larger than the 1,800 that's required. There was several people that spoke in opposition. Their main concern, again, water runoff, they want larger houses and worried about the, um, emergency services being provided in this area. The planning commission recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? I'm gonna open a public hearing for this case. Please come forward and tell us.
All right. Well, um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the Board of Commissioners. I'm Andrea Gray. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. Um, tonight I have the pleasure of representing Freeman Barong Properties and JMJMS Properties and the request for a residential subdivision on Pleasant Valley Road. Our specific request, um, is to rezone 85.3 acres on Pleasant Valley Road from A1 to R1 OSC, uh, for a high-quality residential development. The property you see is located on Pleasant Valley Road, of course, um, just to the west of Good Hope, south of Highway 83 and, um, southeast of the city of Monroe. Here's a little closer view. Um, this is the zoning map. You'll see that it directly abuts the subdivision, um, that was just approved, um, to the north, um, off of Navajo Trail, uh, which is zoned R1 and now R1 OSC. Um, this is our site layout. Um, again, it's the 85.3 acres. We're proposing 72 homes, um, to be built on this property. The average lot size that we've laid out is point seven five acres. Um, the lot sizes range between point six acres and 1.4 acres. Uh, we, of course, would have a mandatory, um, HOA. We have just over, um, 25% open space. And you'll see on the site plan here that none of the roads inside our development connect to any other properties. They're all cul-de-sacked off, so we are not connecting to other parcels. And of course, under the ordinance, we will have the required, um, sidewalks, streetlights, and underground utilities. Um, my client, like every developer, builds to the market and we see a high demand for this type of housing here in Walton County. Smaller lot housing appeals to families, uh, with children. It appeals to empty nesters. It repea- appeals to retirees. Um, and, and the county has recognized the need for smaller lots, um, given your adoption of the OSC zoning ordinance. Um, there's been a lot of talk about water, um, on all the zoning cases today. Um, and like the other sites, we will design, excuse me, to control the stormwater within our site. Uh, we currently have four areas, um, set aside for detention, pond areas to hold the water, um, that would otherwise come off the site. We've done a, a phase three soil survey and of course, we'll obtain all the necessary permits, um, from the Health Department. And even our lot designs are based on being able to, to fit the, the first and septic, first and second septic fields, um, to handle the septic tanks, um, on those lots. Um, here's, um, some representative renderings of homes. Uh, but first I want to say that my client, um, initially in their application had agreed to 2,200 square foot, single-story homes and, um, 2,600 square foot, two-story homes. After meeting with the community and hearing their concerns, we've agreed to increase those square footages up to 2,300 and 2,800, um, respectively. Um, these will be very attractive homes. Um, you see the, the homes will be constructed of cement siding with brick accents, stone accents, uh, board and batten accents, uh, sodded front yards and, um, variation of roof pitches for a very, um, attractive design. This project exceeds the requirement under the OSC ordinance, and I'll do a side-by-side, um, comparison for you on that. The ordinance only requires 1,800 square foot houses for one and two stories. Again, we're, we're agreeing to 2,300 and 2,800 square feet respectively. Ordinance only requires point five-five, um, acre minimums on their lots. We are, um, proposing point six-eight acre lot minimums with an average of point seven five acres. Um, the, the density required in the ordinance is one unit per acre, as we've heard many times tonight. Uh, we are under that. We are point eight units, uh, per acre. And again, the ordinance requires 25% open space and we're right at about 26%, so a little over there. This project is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is in the designated suburban character area. In the comprehensive plan, the suburban character area is designated and is planned to accommodate the majority of new residential growth. Um, and that is what we're proposing here today, which is consistent with your future plans. We did have a community meeting on July 27th. Uh, based on the sign-in sheet that we circulated, we had about 40 people attend that meeting. Um, and, and looking through those, those names and, and where those folks live, only about 14 of those folks, um, live within a mile, um, of this development. The primary concerns were, that were expressed, were quality of the homes, size of the homes, stormwater management, um, and, um, just development overall in the county. Uh, we were able to address many of those, again, through our site plan and through our commitment to build larger, high-quality homes. Um, we had to agree to disagree on some points and, and that was fine, that, that's our rights to do so, but we had to agree to disagree on lot sizes and just development of the county, um, in general. Precedent, um, the lot sizes that we're proposing for this development, this is not the first time that the county has approved that. There are seven other neighborhoods within a mile, as the crow flies, from this development that have lots that are point seven five acres or less. And that's the Preserve at Good Hope, Queens Landing, Tilly Trace, Thompson Crossing, Clearwater Estates, Peyton Woods, and Deer Creek. So all of those have lot sizes at or smaller than what we're proposing on this development. The builder that will be, um, taking on this development, um, does an excellent product. Um, he looks at each development, he comes up with a theme for each development that he does. Um, he does very attractive entrance signs. Um, and here you'll see an example of one that he built. This subdivision's called Burnt Hickory. It was done back in 2004. These pictures were taken just a few weeks ago, so you can see how well-maintained it has been. Uh, but these are 100-foot wide septic lots, which are what we are proposing, um, on our development. Here is Montebello. This is, um, uh, an Italian-style development. Montebello means, um, mountain in Italian. Um, so these are kind of, uh, Italian chalet-type houses. You'll see the very attractive entrance sign there, and that's what we would mimic on our development as well. Uh, once a theme is selected, um, then the plans will be developed for that entrance sign. Here's additional homes, um, in that same neighborhood. Again, the, the Italian brick feel, it's a mix of cement siding, brick accents, stone accents, um, a variety of house plans. Um, this is a, another variation, uh, Montebello Grove, uh, which is a slightly smaller, um, version of those homes. Williams Point, this was modeled after Williamsburg, so a different theme here. Um, again, these are 100-foot wide, 180-foot deep lots, um, and is built back in 2015 and 2017. My personal favorite, Churchill Crossing, uh, modeled after Churchill Downs, and these were built in 2017 to 2019. And again, the lots are what we're proposing here, 100-foot wide, and these are selling at 600,000 plus. And last one, Creek Stone Point. Um, again, these are also selling for 600,000 up to 900,000, um, as part of that themed development, but that the same builder that built these will be building the development that we're proposing. So with that, in summary, um, our request is to rezone the property from A1 to R1 OSC, and we're proposing, um, to agree to the following seven conditions. Uh, one is minimum square footage on a single-story house of 2,300 square feet. Uh, number two is a minimum square footage on a two-story house at 2,800 square feet. Uh, three, the roads will not be stubbed into any adjoining properties. Four, roads will be curb and gutter. Five, the home facades will include cement siding with some combination of brick, stone, board and batten or shake accents. Front yards will be sodded and there'll be a mandatory, mandatory HOA membership with HOA managing the open space. So with that, we respectfully request that you approve this rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this time? All right, thank you, Andrea. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this, uh, proposal? If not, those that are not in favor of this are welcome to come up and state their objections. Herbie?
Board, my name is Herbert Malcolm. I live at 245 Pleasant Valley Road, about a mile and a half up Pleasant Valley towards Monroe from this. Uh, just for those who don't know me, my family came to this county in 1752. We've been here a while. Most of what we have done in that area, we've all been a bunch of farmers. Here lately, we've taken on other jobs, but it's been a very rural area. And from the Pleasant Valley community, which is along Pleasant Valley Road, is mainly a lot of farm families or families who've been there generations. I appreciate Andrea's comments. I appreciate the beautiful development. I didn't hear two things. I didn't hear them say they've actually selected a theme for this area, so we don't know what those have. Nice pictures, doesn't mean anything, cause they hadn't selected a plan. Number two, it's out of the character of the road. From Highway 11 all the way through to Good Hope, there is not one single higher-density neighborhood on that road. She cited seven, di- seven developments within a mile, as the crow flies. They're not on Pleasant Valley Road. In fact, there are no high dens- higher-density developments all the way till you hit, uh, I guess, Oconee County, going out Pleasant Valley Road. I would humbly ask the board not to change the character of the Pleasant Valley community, not to allow this development, not, if, if they wanna develop it under current code, I got no issues. If the lot sizes were 210 by 210, I got no issues. But to change it to something where they're gonna slap them in there, they're narrow and deep, and you got that many, there's another issue. Thanks to the quarry, we have very high traffic on that road now and it's big trucks. And you're gonna be dumping out all this traffic out of one, one entrance. How's that gonna affect traffic? What's that gonna do to accidents? And again, all, no disrespect to the builder, no disrespect to what they wanna do, it's out of the character for the road. It's out of the character for the area, and they can't show me any proof that there is a subdivision like this on that road. Keep it agricultural, keep it family farms, cause that's what it is now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Who is next? And try not to repeat the same objections. Those are very good, Herbie, but please, it doesn't matter. We'll, we'll try to see everyone, even if it-
My name's Paul Strackwoodine. I'm, uh, resident of Good Hope and in Good Hope for 10 years. And, uh, I've gotta say, I'm, I'm really, uh, surprised that our county's going in that direction. Really disappointed our county's going in this direction. All I have to say on this case is, it was classified as A1 when this all began, and only after did they change, that they wanted to change it down to R1. Deal's a deal, you start a deal, it's A1, stick with your deal, don't come back and try and change the poker table and change the rules to the law. Just stick with what you got. It started with A1, leave it as A1, we can all live with that. But there's a lot of people in this county, more and more, as you guys will note and as your deputies will note, more and more people are concerned about this and more and more people are paying attention to the names of the people on this board and what you're doing. So please do not vote to change the zoning on something that was previously six to zero and is now up for grabs because we suddenly want extra change, extra people, extra taxes. If this was your neighborhood, if this was on your road, would you be doing this? I don't think so. I don't think so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Shane Green. I live at 1520 JM Brown Road. I live down the road from this, first dirt road on the left. Randall Farmer was my grandpa. We've been down around Good Hope for a while. Some people know him, some people don't. What I just can't understand is, is grandparents and friends live at Queen Cemetery and the septic tanks, they posted on Facebook, flood out, they can't flush the toilets. Good Hope is the lowest area. If you wanna build a house, they got a law. Build a house. Build it on two acres, but if you're coming to try to develop it or whatever, unless y'all are septic tank experts, there was somebody here in Navajo Trail that lives on the edge of it that has five acres and their septic tank messes up. And the subdivision that you just passed, he said that he had it class three-tested and a couple of them, he spittered and sputtered when he talked, like I'm doing. He was gonna have to, he's gonna have to pump it, pump it from here to pump it to there to make it work, because it doesn't perk like it's supposed to already. So there's another septic tank that's gonna be flooded. And then there's your rivers. I know I'm repeating myself and I appreciate y'all hearing me, but there is a concern. If you just pass them and pass them and pass them and pass them, it ain't gonna work. But thank you for hearing it.
Thank you. Who's, who's next, please? You look like you wanna come. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna give a little different perspective. I have two and a half years in Good Hope, uh, and we're point three miles down the road from where it says, "Welcome to Good Hope." But my property is as, is closer than anybody's property to this. I'm at 2,100 Pleasant Valley Road. We butt up, we share the property line with this development that's going in. I will tell you that the property that they're building on, it's higher in the center and it, and it flows down on the sides. We have a water issue at our house. We've had a water issue at our house since we moved in. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on French drains trying to keep the water out of this yard. The, the three areas that they're talking about these, th- those are too far back. They're not gonna help up at the front. We've already got three houses built to our left. All right? The house right next to us, the septic tank is between their house and my house. The lines come right over to the buffer zone, the, the property buffer. It is, stays wet there. When it rains, we, if you, if we walk over there, and we used to when it was woods, you would have muck up to your ankles. So this, this is going to be a problem, and if they put all of these houses over there, it's gonna continue to be a problem. I, I really, I, I don't wanna stop development, I don't wanna stop progress, but please, A1 is what this needs to be. Whitley Plantation on Old Monroe Madison Road is a nice subdivision with two-acre lots. We need two acres on Pleasant Valley. It's flat. This is the flattest part of this area. And we, we just, we, I would humbly ask you respectfully to keep this A1.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me, sir. Your name again, sir?
Hey, Reese.
Reese, okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm Alex Callaway. I know y'all have seen me for other things. I live on Mayland Smith, which is kinda towards our circle, but I drive this, cause my parents live out in Go- Good Hope. Um, one thing I just wanna point out, I've been here since five o'clock, talking about millage rates, and, um, one thing I just wanna point out to you that I've just heard throughout this is a lot of our citizens are concerned about the increase in our taxes, and that's mostly school taxes, as we've talked, and I appreciate y'all keeping taxes, the military, what it was. Um, but you've just approved approximate, like, if this gets approved, that's approximately 200 homes just this month that you've approved, which is 200 students in our schools, which is at least 400 about, again, these are approximations, 400 new citizens in our county. And like, that is going to have- And like, that is going to have an impact on our Sheriff's Department, our schools, all of these things. Yes, one development doesn't have an effect on these things, but all of these developments just in this month, 200, that we just approved this month, that is, it's just a lot. And I felt like y'all were very sympathetic about people talking about, "School taxes are high," and I know that's not you guys, but I just want you to think about those things, like, think about the big picture here. I'm not, this isn't at all towards this one individual thing, it's just something I've heard throughout this evening.
Thank you, and this is not an average month. This is highly unusual to have this many hit at one time.
And just like, you know, like I said, I drive to Pleasant Valley. I'm like, my daughter loves her grandparents, so we go there a lot. Like, there's already new homes being developed on that road. It's just, I get that we're gonna grow, but, you know, it's just, it's just a lot on our community.
I understand, thank you. All right, we're past our 10 minutes, let's hear one more, and give the applicant a chance to rebut. Does anyone else have something we haven't? Yeah, I can hear you. Come on, come on up. You know I'm hard to hear, and you gotta holler at.
I'm sorry, I understood that you were talking about 83 on the county road, 83 state road. And if you put that much more traffic on it, you might have decelerated. Get in that, I don't know, this could, this could be now a pigback, a railroad. I see you there, I'm sorry, I was supposed to talk to you. The one main thing I've been pushing ever since I started this thing is that rock water, where it's going. My sister-in-law and brother-in-law get drowned every time it rains down the creek, going down the creek, and there's a real problem with water in this area, going both ways now. Mr. Porterfield's house, an old driveway, gets watering, and it's out in the road everywhere, in the highway, because it gets so full. That's the dirt road part of here. The other thing I want to talk about is traffic. We are inundated with traffic, and it's not just this traffic. It's coming out of social circle, it gets on our road Pleasant Valley, it goes through Good Hope, it goes 186 into Athens, Oconee County. And you can't even hardly get out of our driveway right now without, my wife can't even go to mailbox, because if she goes out of mailbox, there comes this big old truck and blows off the road. And if you go step out too far, your car is close to you. So the traffic is pitiful already. And I'm not trying to say, "Don't develop," I'm not trying to say any of these things, but putting this many houses on this road after it's already pretty much perfect. There's some houses going in front of my house, and I have a problem with them, as long as they're building like it's supposed to. I don't want half acre lots, I want the lots, two acres, like it's supposed to be, and do what it's gotta do. If that's the head water of Little Sandy Creek, where that was going, and that's gonna be a problem if they mess it up, because it goes all the way to the ocean.
Okay.
And people really have a problem if you mess up the creeks, and I would, because it goes across my property. But anyway, the traffic and the water is the two things, it's a problem here, of putting more houses on Pleasant Valley Road. That's all out there. Trying to get out of my driveway is a very big problem every morning, every evening. And I don't care, I mean, I'm gonna take precautions, but...
I understand.
This is gonna cause it to be worse. Thank you very much, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, you're entitled. Doing good. Okay, is there any subject that the opponents have not covered would like to cover? I won't give everybody all the time they need. If not, I'm gonna ask the applicant to come up and respond to the concerns.
Yes, sir, thank you, and thank you to those who spoke. I appreciate the care and concern that everyone has for making our county the best place possible to live. I live here too, and I love it. But I think this development will be a great enhancement to our community and to the Pleasant Valley community. Just hitting some of the concerns in the order in which they were stated, you know, with regard to not knowing what the theme of this neighborhood would be. We may not have identified the theme, but I don't know about you, I don't see one bad-looking house in the representative homes that this builder builds. He takes great pride in what he does, and we've agreed to certain specs on the size, we've agreed to certain specs on the materials to be used, sodded front yards. This will be a quality product. This is going to be $500,000-plus homes. These, this is a very, very nice product that will fit well within the community. With regard to being out of character, you know, the county determined, when it did the comprehensive plan, that the character of this area is suburban. And I know change is difficult, you know, moving from ag to residential is not always a welcome change, but it's one that this county anticipated and that it planned for, and this is part of that responsible planning and development that we're offering with this, this high-quality residential development. Let's see. Been a lot of talk all night, I guess, and specifically with the comments here, about septic systems, about flooding, about water runoff. And of course, my client can only control this property at site. We can't control, you know, across the county, what's going on in other properties. But again, we've got plans to retain stormwater on our property, and that's the best we can do. We cannot solve all the water problems across the county, but we can control our own on this site, and we ask that we not be held responsible for the sins of others. Let us, let us work our plan, let us meet the requirements, and do the quality development that we're proposing to do. Comments? With regard to taxes, this, this development will generate substantial property taxes. Again, $500,000-plus homes. I'm calculating, in my head, that might be around $6,000, $7,000 a year in taxes on those homes. Two-thirds of that, of course, goes to the school district. I don't think it's a good assumption to say that there's gonna be so many kids out of this neighborhood that it will, you know, offset the amount of money. You just can't speculate on how many kids may come, right? We probably have some retirees, we may have empty nesters, and then you may have people with kids, like me, that send their kids to private school and pay property taxes and private school tuition. So I don't think it's a good assumption that somehow this would be a drain on the school system. Traffic, you know, of course, you know, we're adding 72 homes, so that's 72, you know, more people maybe times two that will be in this area. But, you know, I guess an argument that cuts both ways that was made is that there's not another neighborhood like this fronting on Pleasant Valley Road. So we're not competing with traffic from multiple other neighborhoods, as you were talking about, on those neighborhoods fronting on 83. So I think that actually cuts in our favor as far as not overwhelming Pleasant Valley Road with additional traffic. Let me just check my notes one more time. All right, well, I think I hit the bulk of the concerns expressed, and again, you know, we respectfully ask that you approve our request, again, with the conditions that we've agreed to, which ensure that, again, this will be a controlled, quality development for our county with impressively beautiful and large homes. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions that this board may have.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions? Thank you Andrea. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this one, and ask the board its pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Compromise is a tough thing in some cases, but it's a give and a take. So I'm gonna propose that we hit this in the middle, not A1, but not R1 OSC. I make a motion, we approve A2, RSC, with a maximum of 56 lots in this subdivision, which would be a density of 1.52 houses per acre, with those seven conditions as stated before. That's my motion. So it stays agricultural.
Okay, repeat it, I know you got it written down where the clerk...
So A2 zoning, go from A1 to A2, so it stays agricultural, 56 lots max, which is 13 lots more than what can be built now, and 16 lots less than what the developer's asking for. So it hits it in the middle. A2, OSC, 56 lots max, a density of 1.52 houses per acre.
All right, you got it? All right.
And the seven conditions that were stated before.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, we got one abstaining. I'm not gonna vote against, but I'll abstain, so it carries four to one, right? Is that correct? Show of hands, those in favor. One, two.
Three.
Three, four. And...
Three.
Three.
Three?
If you're not voting, three.
Oh.
So that fails.
Well, it does. I'm not going to vote for that, it's gonna take...
I think Mark asked to take the vote again, he didn't quite understand it.
I don't know, this is the first I've heard of this, and I was gonna try not to vote on it one way or the other.
I mean, it just depends, if they can do it, they can do it, if they can't, then...
And I understand what Kirkland's saying, I don't know if the applicant knows of this or not. And Timmy's abstaining because he had a reason to abstain.
So make a motion, that motion fails, and make another motion.
Well, Mark, you vote against it. You vote with it, then it passes four.
He's in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Kirkland's motion passed four. Rafford was against it, and two abstentions.
No, one abstention. Well, two, count them.
Right, Chairman.
It takes four. Doesn't matter if we have a majority or not, it takes four votes to pass anything. Did that carry, if it's A1, it can be 1,800 square foot homes, right?
A2, 1,800. A2. Oh, that's 1,800 minimum.
Conditions, okay. Well, that's what passed, folks, and we need to proceed on. We have an acceptance of bid proposals.
We'll take a five-minute break.
I'm sorry?
We'll take a five-minute break.
He's asking for a five-minute...
Five-minute break.
All right, we will take a five-minute break.
Please.
Sorry, Megan, it's one of those nights, it's gonna be, it's gonna be all day. Hey, Lee. Pretty good.
You gotta know what's going on with, you can call me and talk about it. I'm not either.
We appreciate you so much. Appreciate you coming to the meeting. Appreciate your help with this.
Well, it was your idea.
David said he sent you those pictures of the flood.
He did, I got it, I got it.
See? You're hired for your job. I appreciate you.
That was a rabbit out of the hat, I don't like that.
Is he all right with that?
Yeah, he's...
He shouldn't be up. Yeah. You didn't move two fatalities. But they told somebody to get them out.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. We appreciate it, sir.
What's, what's the plan of all these subdivisions being upgraded?
Darn if you do, and darn if you don't.
What's gonna happen with the school system? They've been already, what, about as far as increasing?
Yeah, yeah, we there.
The funding is gonna be coming out of the extra millage, which I went already, what, 6135 already added? Gotcha. But I'm thinking is, if the subdivision is going... Right.
Oh, yeah, it's hyperflailing. We don't want that, we don't want that home.
Gotcha. Oh, yeah.
We're trying to do our best to...
I understand. I'd say it's gonna probably have, we're gonna be forced to build more schools and increase our order. Yeah, Harbor right now, all these subdivisions being built, and homes being built around our area, Pleasant Valley, Good Hope, and then down Old Madison Road.
Middle school, we did a good job. Last they told us from high school, beautiful.
We're still good from high school?
Middle school, that's gonna be...
Yeah.
What's up, man? I'm trying, I'm trying.
It's so Pleasant Valley.
No, 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 no.
Well, I wasn't in the part of that, that's the start.
And it's, we have to go through the state.
We're not in Good Hope, our address is under, right there where the, whatever passed.
Yeah.
But before, it's, it starts picking up, it's going down.
He can petition them to lower it, that it ought to be state.
They don't care. We're in that corner right there, and when they come down, they go their side to the outside too, you know. Maybe we had to move our railboxes. I have to keep this in common.
I know, right? I have to come see you, because she's the one throwing my bag.
We don't get, we don't get a new one, we should find a thousand of them. We should find a thousand of them.
You know what, when the crossroads gets out, my house is gonna heal. It's amazing.
I go down there and look at you, Miss Corn, and every chance I have. That's a pretty...
I like her pretty well. Yep. I'll make some, I'll make some gold this time. Anyway, okay. I'm sorry the lady got angry, but that's okay.
She was hateful. And she's made accusations that... I'm about to take you kickbacks and... You're right. I'm donating my salary to charity. To the team of 130 grand, and I'm gonna take a kickback. Yeah. Good to see you. Homeless, man. There'll probably be Waffle House for us tonight. It'll be, be so loud.
Yeah, and I don't have nothing, nothing to get.
I got eggs. I always have fried eggs in me.
All right, what else we like? Come to order?
Everybody said that.
Where's my guess?
We should prove through this.
Am I on?
All right.
You want me to tell them I was late?
Let's, let's try to get back to the meeting. We still have a long agenda. If everybody would settle down, those that need to leave, leave. And I know you don't get to see people very often, but we need to get back at business. And we have a proposal on bids for the Walton County Public Safety Complex. And CPS, we give them another minute or two to step out. They love to talk. Y'all would, after the last ones leave out, shut the door where we can hear. And where's Bradford?
He's probably one of them out there talking.
Oh, he's out there. Lee? Thank you. Okay, Megan.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We're here this evening to recommend approval of the guaranteed maximum price for the Walton County Public Safety Complex in the amount of $129,575,681. That is inclusive of the pre-construction services and the previous component packages that were previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. So with that, construction is planned to commence next week on the 7th.
All right. So we're within our revised budget doing this?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the first time I've heard some decent news. Any other questions? This is a huge project, and this is to get it going. So any questions from the board? If not, entertain a motion, move forward with this acceptance of bids proposal.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
One.
We have two abstain.
Yep, sir.
Kirkland and Commissioner Bradford. Ministry of Consent Agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review that? Have any questions? Any things that you want to pull out and talk about separately? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of...
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Resolutions? Oh, okay. Resolution, adoption of the 2023 millage rate for Walton County. We're keeping the mill rate exactly the same as we did last year. Entertain a motion to adopt that millage rate.
But then you did increase the fire.
We did increase the fire mill rate a half a mil. Thank you. All right. Uh, it was...
75 million in fund balance we have what?
We have up to 49 million before we close out this last year.
There's a lot of stuff brought up.
It's, it's recommended that we have three-fourths of the general budget in general fund balance. Walton County being carrying less than one-third in the general fund. So we are trying to build our general fund balance up for several reasons. The jail, and if we have a recession, so we're not caught blindsided. But yeah, we have a healthier fund balance than when I come in. It was 21 million, and we closed last year out at 49 million. Any other questions? I hope to add to it after we close out this past year. The departments have been watching their spending very prudently. All right, entertain a motion to approve the 2023 mill rate, which is staying the same on the county general fund part and raising the fire district tax mill rate one-half of one mil.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve on behalf of our firemen.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Warren, do we have a second?
Banks, second.
Banks, second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Passes unanimous. All right, resolution of Walton County Board of Education. This, we don't have a say-so on. We have to set the school rate, school board's millage rate.
Just received confirmation during the planning portion of the meeting that the Board of Education has approved a millage, in the know of, millage rate at 16.693 and a bond at 1.39. And that's what they're requesting that you improve tonight.
What was their millage rate?
16.63.
I ain't been waiting, right?
Which is a rollback. And a mill of 1.39. Four bonds. We're good.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve that for the Board of Education?
I approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, Hank. Finally got to you.
Yes, we have three project length budget resolutions for the board's approval, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5. Could we consider all those at the same time and just take one vote?
Is that okay with the board?
Fine with me.
All right.
Okay, 8.3 is for the EMS classroom and election storage. That's previously been approved in the process, and this is just for the record, for the most part.
Okay.
8.4 is additional parking at the government building. We're in desperate need of some more ADA parking and some visitor parking in the employee area. That amount's gonna fund John coming over there, and they're gonna excavate...
Are we gonna do away with some of that grass of where I've been parking and do parking? Okay.
That's right. And then 8.5 is the public defender's office resolution. As the board's aware, public defenders now at the old jail, we decided to move them over to the office suite that Sharona vacated. And I'm asking for that $45,000 to renovate their space. We've gotta move some sprinkler lines and replace some floor and build some walls and that kind of thing. I think that number may be a little high, but I don't want to box myself in.
Entertain a motion on these three requests.
Go move.
Now, motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you, Hank. County managers' report and update.
First thing I have for you tonight is that we need to select a voting delegate for the 2023 Legislative Conference for ACCG. And I'd recommend that you...
Is that at Jekyll Island?
That's down at Jekyll Island. Commissioner Bradford has signed...
You're already going, aren't you?
To attend that, and I'd recommend allowing him to be our voting delegate.
Yeah, I'll second that. We'll make nominate Lee to be our voting delegate down there.
Who's gonna make the motion?
Well, I'll make the motion. John's recommending. I'll make a motion to...
I'll second.
And we have a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? You're our representative.
All right. Under HR, the employee clinic is up and operational and doing quite well. I believe Mr. Banks recently visited and hope your experience was great there. We've had a number of resignations over the last two months. And the reason I want to bring this to your attention is that the most significant number of resignations have involved public safety, including EMS, the sheriff's office, fire, and 911. So the reason I'm bringing that back up is we've had previous discussions about potentially looking further into public safety and looking at how to increase our ability to retain trained, experienced personnel that are on those different departments. And a number of those have cited pay-related reasons for vacating or resigning those positions.
What's the numbers per department, John?
I can pull them up and get into more detail, but I didn't get down to the sheer number of the departments. But I can provide that to you.
Thank you.
Fire, your second, or your newest E1 rescue pumper, engine number seven, has arrived. And it will be located at the new fire station in Good Hope, fire station number seven. Fire marshal has worked with all the schools in the county, completing safety inspections as the students begin school. Fire staff, including the fire marshal and the training officer, visited, the training chief, visited the Kia plant recently in preparation for our being able to provide services to the new Rivian truck plant. So that's a lot of the preparation that the department's doing as we're moving forward. Under Public Works, they've...
Are we looking at an electric fire truck?
No, sir. Not, not quite yet. Under Public Works, they've completed LMIG and SPOLOs for surfacing of Jeffrey Lane, James Huff, Maple Chase subdivision, and Mount Vernon Road. New replaced culverts have been done on Bullet Court, Twin Oaks Drive, Steel Brook Road, and Walnut Grove Jersey Road. And currently, staff and I are working on a project to bring your attention to. We're completing an assessment of the subdivision roads that did not receive their top coat of asphalt being finished as a result of the 2008 recession. We have approximately 10 of those. The county did secure some bond funds from those, some that they did not, as they played out, and whether those bonds were paid by the banks as we were going through that process back in 2008. But at next month's meeting, we're gonna be bringing forward a proposal and talking to you about a plan now that those subdivisions are mostly built out of going back in and actually resurfacing and taking care of all those roads. Initial estimates are that it is gonna be a costly thing, but we do anticipate all 10 being able to do those for under a million. But we'll be bringing back a proposal of how to actually fund that next month once we're set on those numbers. Under Keep Walton Beautiful, Document Destruction Day on September 2nd from 10 to 12 out at the recycling center. And this year's Rivers Alive River Cleanup will be Saturday, October 21st, and we already have 100 volunteers set up to clean up waterways all across the county. Recreation, West Walton Park fields, five through eight, have had their LED lighting installed, and we're working on additional projects involving LED lighting across the county to increase additional electrical savings as we go forward. But with that, if there's no questions, that concludes the report for tonight.
Any questions?
I got a question, maybe not John, but maybe for you.
Mm-hmm.
If we had any, are we looking at any parking? Is Loganville adding parking?
Yes, sir. That is kind of an option on the table that we've started to look at.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, John. Any announcements? We do have executive session.
The next meeting is September the 12th. It's not the first Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday.
All right. Let me make that announcement. Thank you. Our next board meeting is September the 12th. It's not the first Tuesday in the month because that hits the Labor Day weekend, right? Okay. Any other announcements? If not, we need to adjourn to executive session to discuss a legal matter. Pending litigation. Thank you, sir.
I'll make that motion.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Somebody switch my chair. I don't want to suck a bit.
They did. Mine was up on the ground when I sat in it. I think they want to go to the moon.
Yeah, or you swap it tomorrow. That's what I say. I'll get it for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, I'm working, I'm working, I'm working. Not in class.
Come at the front, I ask.
I've got this place. You have a yellow.
Did anything help with that? So you got to, you got to pay your own.
Pretty much. There's a mess after.
I was supposed to have something to. Three hours before, almost her favorite, my favorite, your favorite, three things. So I find out that. Go down there, walk up, you walk to the door, and then you're like, oh, well, she's playing that, she has them. So I had, she had a free paper. That's pretty screwy.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody.
Oh, be careful, Ollie.
He was not.
Nice voice. Oh, my dear. Very fast with your eye, Patrick. Saying. Quick, 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 please.
That's good.
I mean, it doesn't always seem that they're really committed, but.
I can read that.
Well, sure, but the main, the decision.
Who cares? You got to push for the decision. Well, I can tell you. I heard that's a big problem. No, we're ready. I do have to pass on. Yeah. Because he's not. That is.
Now, is that.
It's cold. You want to, what about?
Who are the people? What's your problem?
So yeah.
As we're sure. I think she's the part of me that I see her like when you were, you were all the time. And there's something about her that I guess. These are like, who people say, I think, really, it's the best part of the past. Some of it is. I know. They have more, I have that.
They include jail.
I believe.
On that, I see. There are other. Okay.
And you get married. You're not married, sir. And you really love.
She's. She's.
Sounds like.
This is sort of something.
Oh.
I'm only very. I'm sorry. Get a motor.
I'm, I'm, we're going to get off.
And just pull the parking business. And we're. Are you asking about this? You're a little. You look here.
I'm sure. Yes. I, I. She's still not going back out to the world.
There's another kind of. She visits.
Yeah.
This. Yeah.
I think I'm the only one. That is all.
I look around, I think I have.
Did it really? She never. I don't. So. Do you, do you have an electric, um, or a what? Or he wants to...
I did talk to him.
I'm just giving him all the... Were you... Were you actually giving him a photo really serious? Uh, you keep... So... Does it not? So you did... Yeah, I see. But I don't... I'm sorry. Oh, well, they can't... Oh, yeah. You're a narcissist.
I thought it was... That was three thousand. So, for the first time, six quarters back. It became... Even if it's a little... That was named for the Jets. The person... You're...
I just love it.
They came out.
Thank you, Bill. I wish you'd say... Oh, no.
It's deeper.
Well, I... I'm... Well, I'm... Don't mind me. And being kind of... But I could play the piano.
We got last of everybody, huh? They all left. Ah!
Even county employees left except for the Sheriff's Department.
They get it. They get it.
It did.
All the people left, yeah.
Yeah, entertain a motion to come about end of regular session.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye. We adjourn.
That's enough of them, let's go. I leave my man to say to the law.
Good save, bro.
I had to talk to him like... He had a, he got on him. They doing him good on water.